Yep.
That's good. All right. If we could reconvene to open session, the board has been an executive session since six o'clock to discuss two tenure candidates, legal issue, a personnel matter, and then to perform a building conditions tour. We could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could have introductions, and John, I'll start on your end.
John McPhillips.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natto.
Robert Teague.
Meredith Murner.
Holly Dellenbach.
Jody Monroe.
Ewan McNeigh.
John Walston.
Lauren Grasso.
Clara Legay.
Rose Festori.
And do we have any Pig or Supa students here tonight? Welcome. Thanks for coming. You guys need to stay until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever one comes first, and just make sure you sign out on one of the sign out sheets. It's up here before you leave, so you get credit. First up on the agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item three, meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I want to just highlight a few students. We had a senior, Lita Stark, who joined other aspiring chefs who shared their culinary skills at a fundraiser which supported the Regional Food Bank of Northeastern New York on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth. We did put out some information about that. Hopefully, a lot of people saw it. Lita is a culinary arts and hospitality student at Cap Region BOSI's, and she was one of only four students in the area who were selected to represent the program. So I'd like to thank Lita for her representation of Bethlehem and student chefs at Capital Region BOSI's. In my understanding, it was a great event. Also, I'd like to recognize four high school seniors who have also, who have been named to National Merit Scholarship. They're the semifinalists for the class of two thousand twenty-six. They're among the highest scoring entrants from New York State, recognized as part of the prestigious academic recognition and scholarship program, which actually began in nineteen fifty-five. They now have the opportunity to compete in the spring for approximately six thousand nine hundred and thirty National Merit Scholarships. So congratulations to Sophie Kobayashi, Kevin Lee, Kieran McNeigh, and James Nowbaum. So, and that is my report for this evening.
Any questions for Jody on those? Next is the board report. The first thing I wanted to mention is that the NISBA annual meeting is coming up. Everybody should have gotten probably a couple of weeks ago, if not more, a copy of the resolutions booklet in their email. If you take a look through it, if there's anything that causes you concern, or you want to share some thoughts about with me, please feel free to shoot me an email. Second, we're about at the time of year. Usually, in November is when we do some school visits, if people are interested. So is that something that you guys are interested in doing?
Sure.
So maybe, maybe Brittany could send out a, I think last year, maybe you used a Google form or something to gather some information on what schools people were interested in going to and
Yep, with the dates also.
And some dates. It might work, that kind of thing.
Yep.
That would be great. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank Elsmere for hosting us this evening. It's always nice to be here. Anybody have anything else they want to share?
I will add a thanks for Elsmere, and I would thank whoever it is that did the PPA provided the food. It was excellent.
All right. Next are our student reports. So Claire and Rose, I don't know if you guys want to.
I just want to recognize the pep rally. I thought it was a very welcome and cheering environment. A lot of students felt connected in our community, and it was a good time to recognize the athletes and their hard work. And I want to congratulate all the participants who helped with the pep rally, and I'm, it's always a good time to have that.
And I want to agree with all of Claire's praise, and also when talking to some students, definitely some, there was some discontent within the student body about pep rally guidelines. So I think to alleviate that next year, we should work on pushing the word out about why these measures are being put into place for safety and appropriateness reasons. So I think just communication on that front next year would be a good addition.
Thanks. And do we, do we have anyone from middle school here? I don't think so.
No.
No, okay. And I do think we have some friends from Elsmere who are here tonight. Is that right? Wonderful. Do you want to, are they all presenting later or now?
At the enrichment.
During the enrichment opportunities. Okay, perfect. With that, then, I will turn it over to our first presentation for this evening, which is about our elementary enrichment opportunities.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We're really excited to talk to you about the elementary enrichment program, not just here at Elsmere, but at all of the elementary schools. As you can see, this, there's a lot of enthusiasm about the enrichment programs that we have here, that we're very lucky to have here. I have with me a bunch of my fifth grade friends who are going to share with you some information about what enrichment looks like at the elementary schools, the benefits that it brings to us, how it's funded, and share some highlights from their experience about the enrichment program. So enrichment is not just a nice extra add-on. It really goes along beautifully with all of the district goals, academics, character, community, and wellness, as you'll see in some of the things that the kids are about to talk, talk to you about tonight.
I ask, I ask you, what's your favorite memory from elementary school? You may talk about teachers, or maybe even that multi-vocation test that you aced. The chances are a special event, such as a guest speaker or a field trip, would come to mind. So what kind of opportunities do B.C. Elementary students have?
There are basically two types of enrichment offered. On-site, here at school, and offsite experiences, both near and far. For onsite enrichment, special guests are brought to school to share their expertise with the students. Guests like authors, environmentalists, and creators are learning museums, or traveling museums, or regular visitors. Occasionally, we load onto buses and travel for educational experience in our community or further away. You will hear more about these opportunities in a few minute moments.
Enrichment is important to Bethlehem because it lets students be hands-on and still get fun educational core memories. It lets students learn while having fun and wanting to do more of it. I think it is important to have field trips because it lets students be excited to come to school, and at the same time, they learn. At Field Day, we have people usually come, and that is a fun educational core memory. That is why I think enrichment is important to Bethlehem.
Not every, not every family can bring their kids to museums or other places to learn from experts. When we have special guests or go somewhere together, it gives every student a common experience to talk about and to write about.
So, of course, these programs come with a cost. We're very fortunate, though, to have these funded both by the Bethlehem School District, which gives about nine dollars per student, and our generous PTAs and PTOs also help to sponsor these. There are several grants that we've been really lucky to participate in. New York State grant is, it's called Kids Connect, and that has, that's a big chunk of change that helps to sponsor some large field trips. And then we have some local agencies that also help to sponsor these special things that we do as well. The Bethlehem Music Association helps to fund some of our special things, like our garden program, and also the Bethlehem Music Association, Bethlehem Garden Club and Bethlehem Music Association. One of the field trips that we're going to be taking soon is sponsored by the Bethlehem Music Association.
We love having special guests visit school so we can learn from the experts and even meet famous people. Once or twice a year, an author will come talk with us about the writing process, where they get their inspiration and more. Some of my favorites have been Peter Brown, author of The Wild Robot, and Adam Gidwitz, author of the Unicorn Rescue Society.
Other visitors include local scientist Greg Steele, who is a family visitor at B.C. Elementary Schools, bringing hands-on learning at incentive and wildlife. Act, acti, additionally, we have learned, we have learned about what, what is like to live with a dis, disability, and how these doesn't need to hold people back from reaching their goals.
Traveling, traveling museums bring artifacts to school, giving us the opportunity to handle items such as toys that children long ago played with, and compare these with the toys of today. Speakers like these teach us more than just the content, content they share. They also demonstrate courage and confidence in presenting. This has been inspired me as I start my career as a musician. I have even already performed here for the whole school. I hope you'll see my name's in lights someday.
On very special occasions, we board a bus and travel to places near and far. One of my recent favorite, favorites was our trip to Mayby Farms, where we were able to actually see how things were made and things that looked like in colonial times, which we had learned about at school. At other times, kids travel farther, such as a trip Glenmont students took to Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty.
Traveling to U Albany for the education, education day was my favorite trip of mine. We got to go to a college campus, make predictions, get bling, and have a great time. Hopefully, this year, we'll take a trip to the New England Science Center like the fifth graders here did last year.
And a little bonus content that the kids wanted to share.
Here at Bethlehem, we have before and after-school enrichment programs that students can join with their friends. Elsmere before-school activities include Earth Savers, where they grow fresh veggies. They also help the earth, of course. The after-school enrichment program, or ASEP, was organized by PTAs. I participated in the knitting and the outdoor sports ASEP. All of the, these enrichment programs let us grow our friendships, learn new skills, and have lots of fun.
So now we can know a little bit more about the enrichment programs that are offered here at all of the elementary schools. The kids are offering to stay for any questions? Anyone has anything you'd like to know about enrichment? Anybody have questions for our presenters? Ewan?
So if there was something that doesn't exist, that you guys really like to do, what would it be?
Yeah, okay.
Like, maybe we could have, like, movie nights, or like, come to school and have a movie night, or all the school could come in the gym and watch a movie.
I would like to have, like, one day out of the whole year where we can just, just let, not Halloween, but like, one day where, like, we really want to dress up as a character that we love in our books, and it would be super fun.
Any other questions? Well, first, can I have a round of applause for all of you? And could you guys all come over here to see me for a second? I got a little prize for you. Thank you for coming. You guys did a great job. Thank you so much. What instrument do you have? And also, see, you can see some of the most especially authors that come to our visit, and some of the, it's actually, we own in our garden, I used to, of Atlanta, our garden, we're all coming up to sponsor our Earth Savers. And this little character was created by our librarian's mother, and we read, uh, by the author. Thank you, guys. So, Nick, that's a really hard act to follow, I think, but I'm going to turn the floor over to you for our second presentation this evening on the proposed twenty twenty-five capital project.
So I would like to share what I would like to spend one day during the year.
If you want to dress up as Elsa, you go right ahead. I'm sorry. Captain.
So, good evening. I'm here again to, to discuss our proposed two thousand twenty-five capital bond project, and tonight will be a summary of everything that we've talked about, where we stand to date. So my first slide here is BCSD by the numbers. This is just to fill everyone in, in. We have four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven students in grades K through twelve. We have nine buildings, seven of which are school buildings, two, one maintenance, and one transportation building. Just under one million square feet of, of space within our buildings, which contain two hundred and thirty-three classrooms. We have two hundred and forty-three acres in total throughout all of our campuses. And it, just a reminder, we're in our oldest building, which is Elsmere, that was built in nineteen twenty-seven, and Eagle, which is our newest building, which was built in two thousand eight. I don't trust technology. You have to look. So some more numbers here. Our proposal, or the proposal to the board, before the board, is fifty-eight point six million dollars, as it sits today. It still comprises, they're playing basketball, still comprises of a hundred and thirty-seven elements. The improve, and the goal of this particular capital bond project is to improve teaching and learning spaces across the district. And again, keeping in support of our core values of academics, character, community, and wellness. The beauty of this project is it is budget neutral with no additional tax impacts for the Bethlehem residents. The next slide is a proposed scope by project by building. So this is just pointing out how much we're spending, or I'm sorry, the percentage of the fifty-eight point six million that we're spending in each building. So as you can see, transportation in O M, the two smallest, have the smallest percentage of being spent. High school, the largest building is at thirteen point nine, middle school, eleven point six, Eagle, three point six million, and six point two percent of the overall. Elsmere, six point eight seven, six. Glenmont, nine percent, five point two million. Cameron Dell is eleven percent, six point seven. For grant totals of, we rounded up to fifty-eight point six million, but the number is fifty-eight, five forty-five, seven fifty-four. And this, this slide also shows improvements the state placed at every school and every building within the district. Okay, this next slide looks similar to the last. This is broken out by category of what we're doing, what the percentage is of the, the total, and what it's comprised of. The top of this slide is cut off, but our biggest portion of this bond is for classroom renovations. That's the big portion, part of the highest. Three percent is windows and doors, sixteen point nine percent for air conditioning efforts, seven point two percent in paving. You have boilers and hot water in two buildings. These three buildings that need to be replaced, just about six percent. And then by safety systems, six point one percent, and miscellaneous, that includes window screens, furniture, et cetera, is at five point five percent. Again, the goal is to renovate the old age classrooms, especially at the elementary level, which is our number one priority. Next slide shows our funding sources, our business, our chief finance, or chief finance and business official, you know, advanced planning for this bond, using our state aid and careful scheduling of funding to resolve a project that's budget neutral to our, to our tax plan pay. This is how it's broken down, building aid. Our estimated building aid would be forty-one point nine million. Our two thousand twenty-two capital reserves would be about sixteen point six million, and in total, all sources is fifty-eight point six million dollars. And this is just to show where the, the majority of it comes from. So this next slide, I, so this next slide shows, you know, by voting, what we're doing as far as classrooms. I don't think you want me to read all of this, however, it's there for your viewing pleasure. Elsmere, built nineteen twenty-seven, we're doing thirteen classrooms, and the Library and Media Center, and this is renovations. This is not the air conditioning that'll be on further slide. Middle school, built nineteen thirty-two, we're doing three art classrooms, the pit area for P E and athletics, and relocation of a music space, and, and improvements. The, the middle school improvements were a focus of the twenty-one and twenty-three capital projects. Next is Slingerlands, built in nineteen forty. We're, we plan on doing six elementary classrooms, the cafeteria, the kitchen, as well as exterior envelope, and we'll, we'll get to that. as well as exterior envelope, and we'll get, we'll get to that again in the future, in the future slide. Next is the high school, built in 1952 with several additions. Where, where, the classrooms are where we're focusing is technology and family and consumer science, or the fax classrooms, to be renovated, and our auto shop and our wood shop upgrades. That includes additionally the art room kiln, room that is currently in disrepair. Next is Hammergrill, built in 1954. Has 15 elementary classrooms that are slated to be fully renovated. The gymnasium and the cafeteria as well. And then, uh, we plan on doing the gym floor, the gymnasium floor, and painting it and removing those 1954 colors that are still there. At Glenmont, built in 1957, there's 11 elementary classrooms, and that includes the hallways. And at Eagle, we don't have any classroom rent, full renovations planned because they're not in need. However, there is some classroom work to repair some damage from previous water that we handled in the 2016 bond. Up here, it's cut off, but 34% of the total project would be used to renovate outdated instructional spaces, which is the key to that. These are just some photos and for modernizing the mid-century classrooms. You know, we want to renovate the outdated elementary classrooms. These are just snapshots. It shows the hallways that we were talking about at the last board meeting. Shows some of the cubbies that are installed inside the classrooms. What our storage issues are within the classrooms, and the outdated window treatments, and the casework in there. The, the construction timelines of classroom renovations will be finalized after State Education Department approves the project, and we start our bidding with the contractors. Again, I want to remind everyone that we have limited swing space, and in some buildings, we may, it may require us to temporarily relocate some of the elementary students to either within a location within the building or to another school building. Any of these relocation plans, we're, we will do our best to minimize the disruptions to the extent possible. So we're going to use all of our brain power and our skills to try to prevent any major disruption. However, there's no possible way to do this volume of classrooms without having some form of disruption. We would like to make it as painless as possible. This next slide shows what we're doing with AC. This time I really won't read them all. I said I wasn't last time. But we talked about, the key to this slide, again, it's cut off up at the top. 17% of that total of $58.6 million is for cooling the hotspots in each school building. And what we determined through this process is that we're going to do the common spaces in all of the buildings. The common spaces would include library, library media centers, cafeterias, and gymnasiums. And then those buildings such as Elsmere and the high school and the middle school will have the second floor classrooms air conditioned within this proposal. This is a quick slide, just kind of showing why, why we think we should air condition and why we think it's important. This is a cooling degree day is what we, what everyone uses to determine your energy needs for a building and how much air conditioning you would need. And if you look, these are our, what I refer to as our shoulder months in the past. So as you can see, May and June, and then in the fall, September and October. The key to this whole slide is if you look at this blue line that goes across, in May, for the last 30 years, about 15 cooling degree days are normal. So, and everything above that line is considered abnormal. So we've had these higher temperatures in May, in June, in September, and in October. Okay, and some of them are kind of really high. So that, that shows these charts, and this was gathered from NYSERD's website, and it, it shows you how our shoulder months were kind of, were cooler longer and warmer sooner. Does that make sense? Is there any questions on that slide? The next slide is showing basically our infrastructure. We're calling it safe, sound, and up to standard. 45% of the total cost includes preventive maintenance and safety upgrades at all schools. Something I refer to as envelope, that deals with our roofs and our windows. Every school building will have upgrades, and I'll touch on a few. Elsmere, the heating system is planned on being replaced here, and a new fire alarm system. And our bathrooms and doors. We have some, some doors that are outdated that very soon, when I say very soon, in the next several years will not be applicable to our safety standards. Middle school, again, roofing, new fire alarm system. We do have a small boiler that we use in the summer so that we can shut the three large boilers off. That small boiler is due for replacement. It's beyond a useful life. And then for our shop classes, our wood shop classes, our dust collection systems are no longer up to code and can't be refurbished, refurbished without making them up to code. So we plan on addressing that, as well as some of the bathrooms. At Slingerland, Slingerlands, again, we have selective roofing. Again, the boilers are, are functioning properly. It's not an emergency. However, we want to increase our efficiency so that we can lower our utility bills. Again, new fire alarm system and bathroom upgrades for the student bathrooms. At the high school, again, roofing, we have some areas that are in dire need of roofs. They're out of their warranty. Paving, completing the rest of the paving that we couldn't complete in the 2021 bond, which includes the bus drop-off area and the faculty parking lot, as well as bathroom renovations and our public address system head-end upgrade. At Hammergrill, the infrastructure would include a new fire alarm system, some door repair and replacements, repairs to the skylight that's on the addition, and the gym and stage floor that I had mentioned earlier, refinishing and painting of the gymnasium to make it more acoustically sound, and the lighting, to improve the lighting. At Glenmont, in the 2021 model, we did the fire alarm, or correction, the boiler system. So we're up to snuff there. However, we need to do a fire alarm system there to bring it up to new codes for those that suffer from hearing loss. And that's the premise behind doing all the butterfire alarms, to bring them up to, I don't want to say code, but bring them up to the standards that we require because we do have folks that work within the district, faculty, staff, and visitors, and students that do suffer from hearing loss. We also are going to take care of the skylight, same, same skylight, same addition at Glenmont. And then at Eagle, Eagle is slated for a new roof and to have the parking lot repaired. And again, this is 45% of that total, 58.6 million dollars. If folks would care to read this, again, this is each one of our scope elements, broken down and listed, and it shows, shows you the total dollar amount at each building. And that coincides with the graph that we showed earlier. Does anybody have any questions on the elementary buildings? Okay. And the next slide is the same for our secondary, which is the middle school and high school. And we also, to save the number of slides, we added transportation and OAN. So again, this breaks it down by the dollar amount at each building and a list of all the scope elements. So when we add up the elementaries and the secondaries and all the rest of our buildings, they add up to those 137 elements. So that is a review of where we are today. So the next steps would be that tonight, the board must approve a ballot referendum resolution. I think we're missing a couple of slides, no? After? Okay, I'm sorry. Make some changes just before we, so October 8th, and then October 17th, we put out our 45-day public notice for the public vote, which would occur on December 2nd. November 7th, we'd send a newsletter to all households within the district. November 19th, at the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, we would have that as our public meeting. So if the public had questions, concerns, or comments, they could bring them forward to the board. And then on the 21st, we would send out another reminder to all the households. And then finally, the public vote would be on Tuesday, December 2nd, at Bethlehem High School in Gym A, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And then this is the proposition language. We, we displayed this slide last meeting as well. Does anybody have any questions on the problem?
Again, the highlighted sections are the more mechanical components of the proposition, highlighting the maximum cost of the project not to exceed $60 million. The offsetting use of the 22 capital reserve of roughly $16.6 million. The ability for the district, should the board so choose, to use additional operating funds to offset any needed debt service that may be issued either through short-term or long-term debt issuance, but a not-to-exceed amount of roughly $43.4 million in long-term debt that will be used to offset the overall cost of the project.
And in record time, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ewan?
I just want to thank Nick and your, and your team, right? My students would tell you I'm not an easy grader or something, but I thought this has been a genuinely exemplary set of presentations. Took me from being a cynic to being on board, right? Built a whole bunch of understanding and explanation and consensus. And I nominate you for, you know, the district's special presentation award, which I just made up. But no, genuinely, it's been, it's been really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Collins got a pin for you.
I've been here eight years. I never got a pin.
Okay, Jody has to buy you coffee every week this year.
Yeah, Nick, you deserve a pin.
If it comes under budget, Nick, we'll, we'll get you.
Anybody else have questions?
I don't. I'll second that, though. I, I thought that just the process throughout has been, has been good in terms of explaining it. I think the public has now been informed. The questions that you've gotten have been answered, and thank you.
Catherine?
I mean, one thing that I do want, I want to echo my colleagues' thanks here, and one thing that I do really want to continue the conversation about is I support, I support installing cooling systems to make, you know, to make life more comfortable and more livable for our students and faculty and staff who all are part of the building. And as we move forward, I want to make sure we're continuing very serious conversations about the operations protocol to make sure that we are being as efficient as we possibly can. Because I know we're very focused, rightfully so, on the upfront cost of installing these. However, given the trends in energy costs and the, what, the way this is playing out, my fear is if we are not incredibly careful and intentional about how, where, and when those cooling systems are used, it's going to become very expensive very quickly. So.
Yes.
Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
A question that might be a little bit better for, for Jody or for John really than for Nick. On the public outreach, the, the slide that walked through the different mailings that we're going to do, I really appreciate that. I'm just wondering if anybody could speak to any additional social or other opportunities that we're going to try to pursue? Because I know one of the things that was a big part of community conversation in the last several years is that these are off-cycle votes. These are not happening in November. This is on a Tuesday in December.
Right.
And I want to make sure that the community is, is as, that, that the school district is doing everything we can to make sure that this is on everybody's calendar.
So, I mean, we'll do, obviously, our website is updated. It has the entire scope. It has the presentations. The purpose of doing the postcards and the newsletter is that those are hard copy that goes to every household. People often, we can put as much information on how through Parent Square, which does have community information in there. But we feel like with this, because it is off-cycle, that the hard copies that go to people's homes hopefully will, you know, people will pay attention to it. We have had a lot of other votes in December in the past, and we've had generally good turnouts. Not typically as high as the May vote, but we still have a pretty decent turnout. So we'll do what we can.
Thank you.
Just one other point regarding communication, Jody. I do think it is important to make sure that everyone is fully informed about the potential disruptions to the classrooms because of the construction. So I would just ask to make sure that our communications are clear about that.
Yep.
So, so no one feels
Sure.
Like they didn't know about.
Right.
Yeah, and if we can continue to, to have that, you know, as part of the superintendent update or a follow-on presentation at an appropriate time to keep the conversation going here, that would be great, too.
And we shared that at President's Council. We had a meeting on Monday with President's Council, and we asked them to also help us get the word out about the vote, the project, and also that piece of it. So we'll continue to update that group as well.
Do you, do you have any sense of when District Administration will have a shareable, like, plan? This is what will be happening with these classrooms, when, and on what schedule or anything? Do you have a sense of when that might come?
I would probably defer to Mike or Drew on that. That would be after state that approves.
So, so maybe winter, maybe early spring?
Well, what we can promise is that we're going to be thinking about this throughout the process. And every stage is designed for it, and we're working through the district throughout. One of the characteristics that we will be gathering, but what we're doing, but what the project is, those are kind of district. So we had, same like first two spaces. So what we can say, we're going to be working on it and coming back with world updates throughout the process of, where, how we look at this, how it is professionally, the district boundaries to do, on the thing to this, do populations. So I can't give an exact timeline. It's just going to be something that we're going to ever perfect it, and finding, and we move forward, and we'll make sure that we're updating, either in the life.
Thank you.
Thanks. Clara Rose, do you guys have any questions?
I didn't have a question, but I'd love to just piggyback on the praise of the others. And I think it's a great project, and I think it's really good. It's budget-friendly for the taxpayers. I think people will appreciate that.
I also want to echo all the praise. I thought it was a very digestible presentation, and I really appreciate you taking the time to give the presentation.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Before, I would also like to say thank you to Jody, John, and Dave, and the Board of Education for having us and putting up with all this. Things that may not be simple and asking the right questions so that we can convey our message to the public and to anybody that's listening here or out there. And obviously, our project team, Brian, Drew, and Mike Collins. And hopefully, this gets approved by the public, and we can proceed because this would be a really great project, especially for our students.
Great. And why don't you come over here for a second?
Uh, next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have, and actually, first, the first thing under there, we have two items tonight. The first is the public hearing on our district-wide safety plans for 2025, 2026. So tonight, we are holding a public hearing on our proposed revised district safety plans as required by education law. And at this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed plans. I ask that you please state your name prior to offering any remarks.
Sure, it's not a public comment, but I would ask, I would ask the, the
That was the right time.
Jody, to just explain a little bit more clearly what this document is, what, what function does it serve, and sort of just generally the process through which this document was, was created and now is, you know, sort of offered to the public.
Sure. So the district-wide safety plan is something that has to be updated annually. And there's a 30-day public comment period. So this was, if you recall, about a month ago, a little over a month ago. You approved the draft plan. It was posted on the website. Information went out to the community that it was now posted for it was now posted for anyone's review. The district safety plan really is the guidance document as to what needs to be in place, and that really kind of drives the building safety plans, which are not public documents. So, the district safety plan is more about process, what's included, things that we consider in our safety planning and our safety training, and the building safety plans are more specific to the specifics of every building who's involved, and those all get submitted to state ed on an annual basis as well. The district safety plan is posted on our website, which is why it's somewhat generic, and there's not a lot of detail in those, in this particular plan.
Right, so this document is sort of the process, the umbrella document that allows the district and you to, to create the safety plans that then actually control the actions that might take place in, in different scenarios.
Correct. Yep.
And, and if I may, this, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's really about who makes which decisions and in what order
Correct.
When we are confronted by a safety issue or an emergency.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I see, seeing no additional comments, I am going to close the public hearing on the proposed revised district safety plan. And then next is our recognition of visitors, if we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come up to the microphone. Moving on to item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just noting, this includes passing the, you know, resolution to adopt that bond we just discussed.
And I'd like to thank the Bethlehem Music Association for their donation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 11.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 12.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one and two.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item, if we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Wednesday, October 22nd, at Slingerlands Elementary School, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and reconvening to open session at 7:00 PM. And then our meeting after that on Wednesday, November 5th, will be back at the high school, and again, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening to open session at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1792.66][1792.66][applause]